All right, we'll go ahead and call this special workshop or the city workshop meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone. Mayor Phillips sends his regret. He cannot be with us this evening. He's a bit under the weather. Before you, you have a agenda. We have today two items. Without any questions or changes, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Move for adoption of the agenda.
A second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We'd like to welcome Judge Hardison. Thank you for being with us this evening. Dr. Richard Woodruff, I'll turn it over to you.
Mr. Mayor, pro tem, members of city council. This evening, the first item on our workshop is discussion of a possible new program relative to pretrial intervention. We're certainly honored this evening to have Judge Hardison with us. I apologize, your name?
Brendan Gardner, Student Services Director.
Also with Brendan Gardner. And I'd like to ask at this time that the Chief of Public Safety, Mike Canera, introduce the program, and then the two of them will give you more detail.
Thank you.
Please.
Sure, I'll be glad to. What we're going to talk about tonight is something that's sort of new for us. This is a formal pre-arrest diversion program. Right now, the court has a post-arrest diversion program. So if somebody is charged with a crime, they can be diverted from that charge post-arrest. And there's some good things about that and there's some bad things. We'll talk about several of those because we're looking at a pre-arrest diversion program. And actually, tonight, we're going to talk about really two different kinds of programs. The first program is a misdemeanor diversion program that will be pre-arrest. And the other is the LEEDs program. The LEEDs program talks about mental health. But the first program that we'll talk about is the misdemeanor arrest program. And there's a number of alternatives to arrests. So really, within the law, it gives police officers, when they're considering making arrest, a number of alternatives that they can use prior to actually making the arrest. So this program capitalizes on the ability for officers to make those decisions in the field, and that makes it an alternative to arrest. And these are just for low-level offenses. This could be like shoplifting, possession of alcohol by a person under the age of 18, simple possession of marijuana, simple affray, you know, a fight in school, or something similar to that. It also, when we talk about incarceration and prosecution, most of that is avoided by post-arrest, and it's also avoided by pre-arrest. So the thing about somebody who has been arrested, in most states, that arrest record follows that person throughout their lives. So when we talk about this alternative to an arrest, what it does is it gives somebody a second chance. So if they're caught with possession of marijuana, or they're caught with underage drinking, this program would not give them a criminal record. Even though records can be expunged, it can be rather expensive, and it's rather time-consuming. So a lot of time, people that don't have resources, resources to hire an attorney, they can't get their record expunged. And when we talk about even officers that we hire, a lot of times, we turn away qualified applicants because of some arrests they had as a very young person. And this diversion is not anything new. The ICP recommends it. They talk about minimizing the criminal involvement for youth, and they support this as a best practice. So part of our concern is the growing correctional system. And you can see over the last 10 years in this particular slide, there's been an increase of people on probation, people going to prison, and people being on parole. First-time offense in North Carolina for 16 and 17-year-olds, there were 18,000 offenses. Now, for us, we've charged about 200, or excuse me, 464 youth in our community were charged as adults in adult court that were 16 and 17-year-olds. Now, these folks would be prime candidates for low-level offenses for this pre-arrest diversion program. Only 5% of that 18,000 were violent crimes. So we're not talking about violent crimes. We're not talking about armed robbery. We're not talking about rape. We're not talking about murder. What we're talking about are very, very low-level offenses. So a misdemeanor diversion program is what we're talking about, occurs pre-arrest and precharged. The participants won't have any criminal record in the criminal justice system. Now, how this program would work is that the officer would pre-arrest. Pre-arrest, he would refer them to a program. If they complete the program, the charge would be dismissed. So there wouldn't be any record, any criminal record, of that person being charged. And right now, what we're looking at is, we've had some discussion between the school system, the judge, and the police department about establishing this to target 16- and 17-year-olds. There's a couple of things I think that we want to do. First is, we want to be successful. So we're going to really start out slow. The judge, and Brennan, and Sergeant Silence with our department spent several days in California, in Los Angeles, and they were able to go to a conference and talk about best practices. And I think one of the messages that comes back from that conference was that we really want to start slowly so that we're really successful with this program. And I think we can be successful with this program. And I think the most important part that we're going to really talk about is, let's see, the recidivism rate. So the recidivism rate for these types of programs are 40% versus 6%. So if somebody commits a crime and they go through the program, 6% of those will reoffend. If they don't go through the program, about 40% will go through or will reoffend. So when we're talking about this program, what we're talking about is reducing recidivism. And that's probably the most important piece of this entire program, is if we can get these kids the first time, and because they're younger than my son, I think about them as kids. If we can get these kids into programs and get them on the right track, then we can reduce the amount of recidivism so they're not reoffending over and over again. And if we break that cycle, that's really what we're after. You know, that's the whole reason we make the arrests. That's the whole reason we prosecute them in court. That's the whole reason for the court system, is to try to change their behavior. But if we can change that behavior prior to that arrest, and use the system to make them less likely to, you know, it's something that I feel that we should be looking at. And I think it's something that I feel would be very beneficial for us to look at when we talk about reductions of crime in our community. Because if you look at our crime rate, you know, I spend a lot of time looking at what kinds of crimes we commit. Property crimes by far are our most serious problems. Auto burglaries, burglaries, shoplifting, petty larceny. Those calls, those cases are what we spend the majority of our time on. You know, we're very lucky that we have a very low violent crime rate, not like other communities within our state. But I think what we can do with a program like this is even make it lower by looking at how we can effectively take these kids who have made one mistake and look at a program or look at a process that we can get them on the straight and narrow, and hopefully keep them out of jail, and also hopefully not affect that one decision, not affect their likelihood for a good job, their likelihood to go to college. You know, I talked to one young man who was trying to get into medical school, who'd had several offenses that were related to alcohol when he was 16, 17-years-old. In North Carolina, you're treated as an adult, you know, and he was having problems getting into medical school. So this kind of program would allow us, would allow us to be able to effectively pre-arrest these people and put them into a diversion program. And I think it'd be more effective. It'd be more effective for us, it'd be more effective for the community, and it would be better for the community. So we're honored here to have Judge Hardison, if he'd like to say a few words before we talk about the LEEDs program.
Good afternoon. Thank you for inviting me. I just spoke with Judge Jay Corpening, who is the Chief District Court Judge for the 5th District, and that's Wilmington, New Hanover County, and Pender County. And he is one of the individuals that has spearheaded this program in this portion of the state. As a matter of fact, he has become part of the National Panelist Presentation Group. And speaking with him over the last year, he's observed a 47% reduction in the crimes that have been committed in school. And as a result, you have a number of students who now, instead of being sent home, stay in school. Because when you send them home, devil's mind is workshop. I don't mind, it's a devil's workshop. And so in reviewing some of his statistics, it appears that a number of young people who were in this program have been able to remain in school and actually improve their performance in school. Whereas in the past, where individuals had been arrested, a number of them were arrested and then became members of one of the, I think it's at 20 gangs that they have in Wilmington now. And in addition to that, the state of North Carolina, through Chief Justice Martin, Commission on Justice is implementing and going to mandate that 16- and 17-year-olds no longer be tried as adult in many offenses. And so juveniles up to the age of 16, 15 and below, their records are closed. So when they are involved in a process like this, that program, once they've completed whatever it is, that program is sealed unless, as an adult, they commit additional crimes. And then some law enforcement agency may have to refer back to their history to see if there's anything that needs to be included in the predisposition sentencing phase. But this program, as outlined, is a program that's designed to reduce the amount of arrests, to reduce the involvement in crime, to reduce the number of kids who get involved in the criminal justice system. Right now, we're at the infant stage. We're still in the planning stage because we have the chief, who is 100% supportive of this program. We have the sheriff, who has indicated his support, and the superintendent has indicated his support. So these will be some of the key members, along with speaking with the district attorney at some point in time, to see if there are any specific recommendations he may have. And then, once that understanding is met, then there will be a formal writing, a memorandum of understanding, and there will be formal training provided for the officers, how to respond in certain cases, certain situations. So the program is really going to be a benefit, we believe, and we hope. And it's not going to take off soon, but we're going to gradually put it together so that once it is put together, like I said, we're going to start out slow. We will probably begin it in the city, because those officers, city police officers will probably be trained first as to how to approach situations, and whether there's a diversion to counseling, or whether there's diversion to therapy, or any other recommended treatment. And so that is how it stands at the present time. And probably Brendan can give you the statistics of the number of individuals that this might affect. But I can say this, with the age changing in the state of North Carolina, raising the age to 18, and leaving 16- and 17-year-olds not being tried as adult, we were in a chief's meeting yesterday afternoon, and as I understand it, I think it's approximately 1.2 million students can be affected by that change in age. And that's in the state of North Carolina. And if you take the statistics from Judge Corpening's, and you reduce that by almost 50%, you can see how much of a success this program may be.
I think one of the things that struck me when we were out at our conference in California was not just when a student goes, is arrested at school and has to go stand in front of Judge Hardison, but even when they just go through that arrest process. You know, forget if they even go any further than that, that they decide not to pursue it. Even going through just the arrest process makes them significantly more likely to reoffend. And so it's not just those that are convicted, not just those that even, you know, go on a post-arrest diversion program. We want to avoid that. We want to get to the root of the problem. We looked at our arrests in Onslow County schools, you know, and we're arresting a little over 100 students a year, sometimes more, sometimes fewer. And more often than not, they are very minor offenses, some of the offenses that Chief Canera was alluding to, talking about minor, you know, very small drug possession, affray. Disorderly conduct is our most common form of arrest in the school system. And like Chief Canera, it's a small mistake that a lot of people made. They did an exercise. The former deputy commissioner of the Philadelphia Police Department did an exercise, and just basically did an anonymous poll. And we're in a room full of educational professionals, judges, law enforcement officers, and had them anonymously write down crimes that they committed when they were younger. And the list was impressive. And the difference between where they are now, successful people, and somebody is just luck, that this person got caught and this person didn't. And it shouldn't be left up to luck. And so that's part of this program, understanding that students make mistakes, understanding that kids make mistakes. Their brains aren't where they need to be. They're more apt to partake in at-risk behaviors and take those chances. And we shouldn't let them, we shouldn't let it affect them for the rest of their lives because the effects of a simple arrest like that, disorderly conduct, could lead to what they call collateral consequences. Driver's license, a job, purchasing a firearm, getting into the military, all those things long-term for one small moment of poor judgment. And we really want to get away from that. And this program is moving in the right direction for that, and to really get the focus back on kids and keeping them in school so we can get them down to doing what we need to do and what they need to do.
Thank you. Now, will this program, so basically, you're still molding the program in terms of what the actual program will consist of?
Yeah, and I'm not going to speak for the judge, but I think our goal is to move rather slowly, to look at what kind of programs we're going to be directing those folks to, and also what the program is going to look like. How, we know we're going to start out in the schools, but so how long are we going to stay in the schools and then move it out to the officer on the street? I think it's a good plan to start in the schools, but I also think that this program could have some real value for officers on the street that catch a young kid with, you know, shoplifting, larceny, and things like that. So, you know, I think it's probably aggressive to think that we will be able to start this in September, but it's going to take some planning, it's going to take some real effort in order to get it. Because one of the things that I learned about police work and police officers after 30-some years is that for a program like this to be effective, they have to believe in it because they have a lot of discretion on the field. So we want to make sure that it's going to be successful. And it's going to be worth it, I think, because when you look at a 6% versus a 40% recidivism rate, I mean, those are real numbers in North Carolina. That's the Durham program. And it will reduce our crime rate, and it'll be good for our community.
Who has the, or maybe it hasn't been decided yet, but the decision to enter someone into the pre-program, who will make that decision?
Well, what we'll do is, as a group, and the judge is kind of spearheading that, is that we'll identify those offenses that we will look at for the pre-arrest program. So we'll look at those offenses, and then we'll farm that out to the officers, train them, and say, these are the offenses that we will accept as far as this pre-arrest diversion program. So that'll be kind of a collaboration between the school system and other stakeholders in the community, so that we make sure that we've kind of looked at it and said, you know, because there's a lot of discussion about, for example, gun offenses. I mean, if somebody's caught with a gun without a permit, are you going to allow them to go through the program? Are you not going to allow them to go through the programs? So I think when we get that together and start to discuss that, I think, you know, we'll have all the stakeholders in the room, and we'll kind of look at what offenses are going to be, and then what offense, and how we'll handle those offenses. Whether the police department will do some, I mean, with our crisis counselor, obviously we can do some things in-house. Whether it be referred to somebody like the pretrial services, how that whole process is going to work. So, you know, we want to make this slow, just like I'm going to talk about the LEEDs program. You know, we met with the Harm Reduction Coalition today to talk about another pre-arrest diversion program that we'll be working on, has to do with mental health and substance abuse. But again, we're moving slowly, and we're going to make sure that all our partners are in the room with us when we start to talk about how that program is going to work as well.
And one other thing, in Durham, and in most other areas that have implemented this program, say the officer decides this is an offense, this young person needs to participate in the program. Well, if that individual's arrested, they are scheduled court date. Then when they come to court, it's a question of whether or not they want to proceed with or without an attorney. So then we've got another continuance. Then, on the court date, the attorney may not be ready yet to proceed, so then you have another continuance. And then, by the time it's disposed of, it's so far away from the time it occurred. And situations like this, if an officer decides this individual needs to be in a program, in Durham, you receive a slip. You have 72 hours to report. So there's immediate response to whatever the behavior was. If that individual does not show up or does not participate, then that officer is going to issue the arrest charge. So there will be consequences. And in Durham, I think the last session that they spoke about, out of 90 individuals, they had three that did not complete the program. And so the matter gets resolved quicker, the issues addressed sooner, and that way the child or the individual can relate to why and what's happening. And that helps to also reduce the amount of recidivism, and it keeps the process moving without excessive delay.
Relative to the role that the city council would play in this, I believe that what you're doing is presenting this as general information for the city council. The decision to set up the program, I do not believe is within the purview of the mayor and council. It's really within the purview of the judicial system. Is that correct or incorrect?
Well, it will be a combination, because the General Assembly, well, the Director of the Administrative Officers of the Court has given directions to all the chief judges that this program is going to affect, and it needs to be implemented. However, there's not a specific timeline. It has to be implemented by the state. But this is an effort to statewide implement this program and help to see if it's going to be effective enough to continue. And based on the information we've received thus far from Durham County, New Hanover County, I think Wayne County and, Wayne County and Lenore County is in the process of implementing theirs. Wake County has it. Orange County, Chatham County has it. And I think there's another county, I think Guilford County is in the process of implementing. So it's in its infant stage, even through the other agencies, other districts. Some of them have begun, and so from those, we also would get ideas as to what works, what doesn't work, what are the most effective ways. And we're going to use a culmination of all of these to help put this into action, because there's no need to reinvent the wheel. We just want it to roll smoother.
John?
Well, I didn't get to go to California, but I did get to go to the Center for Public Safety and hear the Durham presentation. And they have two staff persons there that work the program. Diane Jones, who's with us tonight, she is the head of the pretrial diversion program here in Onslow County in the 4th District. And Bill Ross, former probation officer, and Colonel Bob Switzer over there. But Diane, I think, with Judge Hardison and those folks, put this program on, and it was an excellent presentation. I think that, from what I recall, there's a funding issue, because whether it's run under Diane's program now, the pretrial, or for some youth setup, there's an issue that this has kind of been a mandate judge with insufficient or no funds. And so, but to let the council know, you already participate, and you already make a contribution to the pretrial resources. So at some point in time, when it's kind of, the meat's put on the bones, there'll probably be another presentation to let you know exactly what's going on and to see if the city would contribute in some way to help in that way. Is that a fair summary?
I have to defer to the chief on that one.
Well, basically, we would be, they would be seeking additional funding for the program.
For this program.
And that's basically why we're hearing the presentations tonight, and we've asked for it to come forward for that reason. And again, it's a great way to help our youth get on the right path. And, you know, I'm fully supportive of it at this point.
Let's kind of get into the second part of, if it's all right. And we'll talk about the LEEDs program, because the LEEDs program is very similar. It's not the same, but it's very similar. And this chart just shows you the percentage of the population, people in state prison and jail who have some type of alcohol or drug disorder, and those with serious mental illnesses. So a law enforcement-assisted diversion program is similar to the program that we just talked about, but this is people with all walks of life. And what the LEEDs program is, is people that either have some type of substance abuse or mental health need are referred to social services. I know we're kind of running kind of tight on time, but what this program does is, it will allow the officers to refer those folks to some type of social service. And I think this program is going to kind of dovetail onto what we're working on right now. onto what we're working on right now, what the task force has been working on as far as the Crisis Intervention Center. So this will be a program where officers who find people with low, again, with low-level offenses, public drunkenness, possession, small possession of marijuana, you know, something that's related to the mental health. You know, we answered around nine hundred calls where somebody was mentally challenged last year. Some of those offenses, some of those people were taken to jail. Those people would be diverted into this Leeds program. And they would be required to go through some type of substance abuse or mental health training or some type of program to try to resolve whatever the issue is. Are they not taking their medication? Do they need detox, whatever that, whatever that might be. So as kind of a parallel track to what, to what, Mayor, you've been working on with Councilman Thomas, this program, we would hope, would be ready to go live when our Crisis Intervention Center is open, that we can refer them or take them directly to there instead of to jail or to the hospital and hopefully, hopefully get some people that, who have either some type of mental illness or some type of substance abuse problem, some help. And I think, I think that, again, when we talk about the impact on recidivism, you know, the people that participate in this program are less likely to be arrested within, after they complete the program. So I think from a crime prevention standpoint, both of these programs will have a tremendous impact on our rearrest rate, which will overall reduce our crime rate. And I think it'll be better for our community. So these two programs are things that, over the next year, over the next several months, that we will be really focusing on, trying to get them implemented, especially in light of the Crisis Center being targeted for some time in the wintertime.
Thank you. Let's take just a minute. Mike mentioned the work that the task force, the Mental Health Task Force, which is made up of two county commissioners and two city council members. Councilmember Thomas, Mayor Protem Lozera, also Commissioner Knapp, Commissioner Price. We've now had three meetings. We'll have a fourth meeting tomorrow evening out at the county. We're making good progress. Harry Brown has put in the state budget. Hopefully, it will be finalized and adopted. Facility improvement money, which comes from the sale of the Dorothy Dix property, you know, in the past. The operational budget is currently being analyzed. We have provided the council with copies of the minutes of each of our meetings. At a point in time, the, most likely in August, we will be prepared to bring back to city council an overview of the task force work and also discuss funding requirements. But I have to commend the two council members and the two commissioners for taking this task on, for the focus that the county and the city are both giving to this. But we do want to tell you that, most likely, your first or second meeting in August, we will be prepared to give you a full report relative to mental health and this new Crisis Center. Councilmember, Mayor Protem, you want to add something to that?
No, I think it was well said. And I think all these, all these programs that we're talking about will all go hand in hand. And at the end of the day, is to create a better community and to give people in need an opportunity not to have a second chance if that's, if that's what they're looking for. And I think that both these programs are well-needed in our community and pretty successful in a lot of other communities, as you indicated earlier. Especially for these youths that have these minor issues, but then because of the way we currently do things, they feel that they can't move on with their life. And I think that creates more and more problems within a community. And I think these are excellent ways to give people another opportunity to get themselves back together. And so I'm very excited about it. And I want to thank you for all the work you've done. And Judge, thank you for being with us today and helping with this program.
My last comment before we move to the next agenda item. The city greatly values and appreciates the current pre-trial intervention program. I don't want anyone to think that these alternative programs are in competition. They're intended to be complementary. I would also want you to understand that, from a management standpoint, we are not going to ask you to raid the money that currently goes to fund pre-trial intervention to help fund these. We will need to find the additional money. But I want to publicly state that the city values the current pre-trial program. It is very important for this community. It is very important for the people who go through it. We see these tools, which have been identified tonight, as additional ways for us to address the problems that we're facing as a society.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Judge. Chief?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for being with us.
Thanks.
Have a good day.
Do we have time for the?
This will only take a second. Under the council manager form of government, the city manager is authorized to direct the staff and determine the various activities and assignments. Over the last several months, as we have looked at the retirement of Reginald Goodson, who was the director of a fairly large department, we've also looked at the analysis relative to the workload in those departments. What we know is that when you look at Development Services, it includes code enforcement, it includes community development, it includes planning and permitting and those type things. We know that growth in the city is slowing down. Fortunately, we've had a lot of commercial growth, but residential growth, as you know, has slowed. We also know that we are facing the potential loss of Community Development Block Grant money totally. We do know, from information received just this past week, that it is in next year's federal budget. It is fifteen thousand dollars less than what was shown to you when we went through the budget. But we also know that if Congress is moving on the path that they appear to be moving on with the president, that a year from now, we will not have a Community Development Block Grant program. That will mean that we will have program income, but our program will not nearly be as large as it is. As a manager, every time a vacancy occurs in almost every position, now certainly not firefighters or police officers or sanitation workers, but almost every vacancy, the first rule we have under this management team is we analyze, do you really need it? And do you need it in the form that you used to have it? The time to make change is when things are vacant. A department director over this department costs the city about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. That's through salary and benefits. When I looked at the role that Reggie played, and he played a very important role, but I look ahead at what I think the city is going to be facing, what I'm preferring to do is reorganize that department. We did a very similar thing several years ago when Tim Chestnut left us as the Parks and Recreation Director. So what I'm proposing, and I'm not asking you to vote to approve it because I don't believe that it's required that you vote. I am required to inform you of the changes. So this is what we're looking at for the future. We will divide that department into two smaller departments. You will have one, and without my glasses, I'm going to move closer to the TV screen. You will see that you will no longer have Development Services. What you will have is Community Engagement Department, where Code Enforcement, Community Programs and Livable Neighborhoods, Community Development and Office of Livable Neighborhoods will be in that section, that department. You will then have a Planning and Inspections Department, where you will have planning, permitting and inspections. And instead of having those divisions that report to a department director who reports to the city manager, we're simply flattening the organization. I believe that the skill set that you have in the manager's office, between Ron and John and Glenn and myself, that we're very capable of flattening this organization. So what I'm doing tonight is what I believe I'm required to do, but also what I want to do. And that is to explain to you the managerial decision on how we're going to restructure the organization. And I'd like to ask John, do you believe that the council has to vote on this? Or do you believe that the manager has the authority to do this?
I think that they allocate so many positions and you can spread that out. And again, if they're not happy, you know what happens. So we're good.
Do you have questions about it?
A lot of, which I really appreciate. A lot of our most recent ordinances and codes have included a phraseology that certain things could be appealed to the Development Services Director. So who, where is that, who is that person going to be now? I mean, is that, you know, I'm asking that because there used to be, there could be like an appeal or his determination that, you know, provides some relief to an applicant? Who's going to make those calls now?
Well, I believe that if you go further into UDO, what the UDO says is that should titles change? But I'm going to refer that to the city attorney.
We've talked about this, and right now it goes to Ron.
Okay.
Because if you recall, and I think Richard even reported this to you, that, and I say Ryan is the head person there, but he's the one who's, they need to appeal from. And so Ron is that person. And if we need to go back and do anything with the UDO, we'll be bringing it to you to tweak that. But again, that's the concept, is it would go from Brian as the decision maker. He's at that position, and then Ron would be that. But then it would go to the manager ultimately. But that would take that place.
Any other questions? Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second. One favor.
Oh, second, second.
All right, please adjourn. Thank you.